Hi everyone, so welcome back. Today we're gonna be looking at AOC and her dumb ass like not even trying to listen to her constituents. We're gonna watch the whole entire thing to get more um of a better opinion and not just biased ones from certain clips. But this is a full video um when AOC busts the move at the protesters crashed town hall. Posted up by the New York Post, we're gonna talk about it. And then we're gonna talk about, we're gonna switch over to a Fox episode in which they go over why AOC is so furious that um she's losing Hispanic voter support. So without further ado, let's get into it.
She's saying it's housing for LGBTQ.
I was making the point, I know, but I'm just making the point. Cause my question was, well that's worth it.
That's just unfair, that's like racist, that's like racist against straight people.
She's gonna say, she's gonna claim one.
The wild crime that's going on.
There you go, there you go.
The woman that was stabbed 20 times, that was a 9/11 FPA law. This is insanity. The boy, the boy that was stabbed, the black boy, the black boy got stabbed on the train platform in Rockaway.
Yeah.
The black boy got stabbed, stabbed nine times. Every single day.
People all wanna believe from the.
The steel worker that was stabbed, killed, there's been nine killings on the train. This is all wonderful what you're talking about. Wonderful housing. I'm gonna give it to you. I'm leaving New York City if you don't take pride in the control. And I know you are all for defunding the police.
That's not true.
Johnny?
Yes you are.
You know the laws.
You know the laws.
My own wife, which was the most radical minority candidate when it's elected. Talk to him, can you talk to him?
Let her speak.
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 We the people who got the right.
Okay, look, for those who are up there trying to say, let her speak, let her speak. First off, you're only doing that to drown out this individual's um concerns, which he has a right to. That city is extremely dangerous and it's all because of policies that AOC has pushed, like defund the police. Oh, almost every progressive definitely called for that. Cori Bush, Ilia Omar, Taliya Rashid, that bitch, AOC. Like you, like the people who are going to be affected by this the most are minorities and especially those in lower income um areas, okay? But let's not pretend that minorities were telling you this before you wanted to enact these dumb ass laws. You thought that you were doing something, but no. What you were really doing, what you were really doing was um helping raise the casualty of brown and black bodies. And now you're getting called out about it. By who? No other than minorities. The irony of that, I love it, I freaking love it. So I am dancing y'all, but I'm dancing because I agree with them. I'm not dancing because I actually uh oppose them like and wanna mock them like AOC is. I 100% agree. Be like, yes, we will knock apart, be put it in a two-step, yeah, put it in a two-step, yeah, put it in a two-step. Yes she does, yes she does. Get it out, get it out, get it out, get it out. Bad bitch, here we go. She ain't nothing but trash. A trash politician. We don't need to get gone, we don't need to get gone, we don't need to get gone.
Very classy, thank you sir, thank you sir.
She's smiling right now, she, you know, her problem is, come, I swear, if New York actually keeps her in her office and her seat, uh well that's y'all fault, that, I hope you get everything you wish for. Um, you know, don't do the same mistakes that California did after they recalled Gavin Newsom's ass and then put him right back in. Okay, don't do the same thing, because I'm just gonna laugh at you all, I'm gonna laugh at you all, because you could've took her out. She, that girl could've been in the unemployment line, but she's probably gonna put you in the unemployment line if you keep letting her stay around, making all these bad decisions. But I, I'm going to have hope, I'm going to have hope that the majority of, like the majority of the individuals in this room are definitely like, look at that, vote for Tina Forte, fuck AOC. Like, I, I hope the majority of New Yorkers in New York City are like that. Um, like they are in this room. It doesn't seem like she have a lot of supporters in this room, unless, you know, my mind is playing games on me. But let's go back to this.
Blood are running up the street of New York that just went for like you. Come on here, AOC, answer the question.
How much should I give you, babe?
Come here.
Excuse me, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I will say this once, this is still a students' community center. We have children and families in the building. If this will continue, I will ask you, I will ask you to. Of course the fat lesbian comes, I mean, she might not be a lesbian, but of course the fat lady comes out and saying because AOC doesn't have the balls to stand up to the people that she literally fucked over. Step outside. If this continues, I will ask you to step outside. Shut your fucking ass up. Sit down. You're part, you're part of the reason, you are part of the reason why New York is the way it is, cause you dumb, y'all vote for these dumb ass politicians who have all these grandiose ideas of what they think society would be like in their socialist fucking utopia. Well, guess what? It didn't work, it's not going to work. She probably, I mean, this girl don't even like to even know what, she doesn't even know what a woman is, okay? She's too scared to even say what a woman is. But you know what? It's because she crazy, she's crazy and she has all these policies that don't make any sense and it's all because of people like you, y'all voted for her and so shut up, sit down, take the beating that you're gonna take. And we don't wanna hear anymore, just, just stop it.
Please tell it. Forty minutes about an object. Okay, answer the question, answer the question. An object.
Respectfully. 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 Respectfully, respectfully. Ma'am, you're saying, ask us why, y'all have been talking for 20 minutes, okay? We know why, we know why you're mad. Let's talk about it. I am not mad, it's only two fucking generals.
Start talking, start talking, AOC, you just sitting like, oh my God, whatever happened to you having balls like Carrie Lee, okay? If you see your constituents being like this, alright? Don't you think you wanna calm them down by saying something? You're just up there, like, just, your presence there, it's literally, it's just antagonizing them even more. Because you're not saying anything, you're, you're just sitting up there looking at them and quite frankly, like you're ignoring them and then mocking them when they make beats, instead of getting up, standing up and saying, look, I know I fucked up. This is what I'm going to do if you keep elect, if you elect me to stay in, this is what I'm going to change, this is what I'm going to fix. But instead you just sit there up on the stage and look at the calamity that you have caused and you just stare at them like you're just, like you have nothing, nothing to say to try to redeem yourself. Like, these are the type of politicians we put into office, it says a lot about the individuals who vote for them. Like, why did you vote for them? Why did you vote for this type of individual when she don't even have the uh, the audacity or the, the strength, the um, the um conviction to stand up and admit that she's wrong and say, this is what I'm going to fix? Cause you know why? She's not, she, this is everything that she wanted. And she thought that the, the mass, you idiots who voted for her would go right along with it. She knew that it would cause this travesty, she knew that it will cause um more crime. She knew that inflation would grow, um rise. She doesn't even, like, and for someone who has a basic understanding of economics, come on. Or at least that's what she claimed she went to school for, but to sit here and act like she didn't think any of these things would come to pass, I think it's a, a little disingenuous and a little naive to think that none of those things would actually have an effect on society in the manner that it has. Like, anyone could've told you, when you defund the police, you will definitely have issues arise. People will abuse the law, they will take for granted that the police um are not going to be called out. Um, they're gonna be opportunistic um when, because the police are not at their full capacity. And when, you know, left to, if humans are left to their own demise, they will take the path of the least resistance, okay? Time, you don't need a history book to know this, you don't need, I mean, well, you see it through history, but it literally explains so in psychology, sociology, anthropology, they all have the same um tales when it comes to individuals. If given certain opportunities in which they can make their lives easier and if that means it have a little criminal, criminality element to it, they will go down that path. And uh, well, you guys were voted for, it's not like she had this all a secret. It's not like she gonna um, and then this woman over here screaming how there's two genders. Uh, well, you voted for her, she's literally been all about LGBTQ stuff and advocating for them more than, than women for crying out loud and she's an actual woman, now she doesn't even, she doesn't even wanna acknowledge that women are mothers. She calls them people who have the capacity to get pregnant. Okay, really? Okay, you, you, she definitely sucked the tit of propaganda like really hard, but you know, whatever. The lights went out. Oh my gosh, she's gonna go run for her safety, she's so scared of the poli, she, she's so scared of the pop, the populace because they rise up against her, so now the lights go off, she's gonna hide inside this little cubby because she's scared that someone might come and attack her.
I'm just not allowed, I'm not allowed to be in a room when the lights turn off against little, that's one of the things. Alright, alright.
So, so she's worried about her safety, but she could give a damn about the constituent, her constituent's safety, like the audacity on this woman, the audacity on this woman, I hope she does not get real.
Listen, alright, listen, listen, okay, listen. Y'all have made your point, if you wanna keep going, we can go all night, whatever it is.
What are you going to do to fix it? Who is this Tina Forte? Oh man, okay, okay, so now we're gonna watch um. You've been thinking. We're gonna watch this um episode with Gutfield, I actually really like Gutfield's show, I haven't been watching it a little long lately, but um, let's see. Their take on AOC blaming the Democrat Party for losing Latino voters. Okay, she really did not, um, you know, and, and this is just gonna be my opinion. When you try to say that families aren't important, when you try to dissolve family units by making sure they break up so that, oh, um, if you have a two household family and you make too much money, well then you won't be, um, you won't be eligible for certain tax breaks, right? It's like you, it's like you're um, it's like you're enabling families to break up when you uh try to indoctrinate children about genders and uh, have, if, I'm from Florida and um, I will definitely say that there, with, between living with Arizona and Florida, I do think they're a different breed when it comes to Latino or Hispanic voters. I do think Mexican Americans are, are very different than individuals who come from Cuba, who come from the Dominican, Dominican Republic and all that other stuff. They live under heavy socialism type, you know, communist rule, they don't want any of that. They don't want any essence of that, because they know what it looks like down there. When I feel like a lot of Mexicans who do come up, um, and from, even from what um, um, individuals along the Arizona border are saying, uh, when these illegals cross over into their, their property, a lot of these farmers, they're crossing over to their property. Years ago, um, they were happy when individuals would give them water, would give them food and a, a lot of farmers were more um genuine in wanting to help these individuals. However, now they're coming over with entitlement, saying, oh, we don't want that type of water, we want bottled water. Oh, we don't want that type of food, this is the type of food we want. And I'm sorry, bitch, you come from a country that didn't even care about you as a cit, as a citizen, they did nothing. If you actually look into the history of Mexico and Latin America, they did nothing to actually help you guys. Every single time a politician has gotten into power, it was always um for them, the oligarchs, just go. If anyone um have read on the fall, on How Nations Fall, I would definitely recommend that, okay? It literally tells why um in Arizona, where you have Nogales, Arizona and Nogales, Mexico, it tells you why there's a difference. Even though there's only thing that's in between them is a freaking border. Mexico never had a constitution like we did in which they put, in which the constitution was made by the people for the people. Okay, that's the difference. And now these individuals come over here acting like they're entitled, they're, you know, uh, thinking that the government should be there to help them. I don't really like those types of Hispanics, I don't like the, I, I don't even like those type of, those type of Americans. No, cause that requires you taking, um, stealing from people who go out and labor really hard to provide a lifestyle for you and I don't think that's fair, okay? America wasn't founded that way and if it was up to me, I would get rid of every single social service that we have and let us go right back to freaking what it was before the 1960s when social, okay, when it comes to the older people, um, social security. But when it comes to Latinos, they like to take, they have big families, or at least that's what I knew back in Florida. They have big families, they're very pro God, they're very pro family and when you, uh, uh, when you don't even wanna know, when you don't even want to claim what is a woman and what is a man, um, um, you don't wanna talk about God, you want to get rid of God. You don't, you don't have to blame the Democrat Party on that, AOC, you just blame it on yourself. Like, really? Are you shocked that they wanna support your ass? Are you shocked that um, um, let's call it um, the um, the Flores, Alexandra Flores, not Alexandra Flores, but uh, the, the woman who down in Texas um took over a region that was, had been Democrat strong for decades? She took that over as a Republican, are you shocked? Are you, why are you shocked? Everything that this new, this new Latina part of the Democrat Party um has become so anti-family, you didn't, you, no one had to influence these Latinas to change their mind. All they needed is someone to represent what their culture is about and they will vote for them, not your ass. But you know, call me crazy, I don't think the Democrat Party um needed to help you get rid of. I've been a customer for about a year now, so I wanted to make. I don't think the party, um, the Democrat Party helped you in getting rid of uh, losing this um Latina Hispanic vote, you did that all yourself.
They're making serious inroads with the fastest growing voting group and Democrats are already playing the blame game. Turns out Democrats have been taking Latino voters for granted when it comes to their top issues, inflation, crime and immigration. And AOC is lashing out at her own party for never making an effort.
I can at least say with Latino voters, we've never tried as a party. The Democratic Party has not tried in, in terms of Latino electorates. And I mean, where's our dream act? Where is our?
Dream Act is letting illegals who broke our laws get citizenship. No legal migrant I know wants that, ever, okay? Especially when they have to go through so much shit to get here to begin with in the first place. And I stand by those who come here the right way, who go through school, go whatever they have to do to come here, whether that be through refugee or um, um, asylum status, no. Those individuals deserve to be here, these fucking entitled pieces of shit going, coming through our border, no. And then they're bringing fentanyl with them too, no. They do not deserve an, and then an entitlement of these individuals that broke our law and they, they're gonna get citizenship. Name one country, name one country where there's um open borders and that you can just go in and then demand citizenship. And Japan, Japan, you will never, ever, ever be a citizen, okay? I don't hear anybody else complaining about that, claiming that they're xenophobic, no. They have a culture, they have a rituals and they do not want to tainted by individuals who would blatantly disrespect who they are as a nation. And honestly, this whole, um, this whole persona that we have here in America where we don't even have pride in our culture, name one country that hasn't had a bad history, but yet the people there aren't proud, are still proud of their country. Name one. But for some reason, Democrat Party wants you to feel so fucking, you just hate your country, just hate your country so much. Allow people who don't even, allow people here who don't even respect you to come in and take what they claim to be theirs. All for entitlement, all by entitlement. I'm like, you know, you, you didn't need, like, like I said, by enacting certain policies and neglecting your own constituents, neglecting those citizens that put you into power to begin with in the first place. The Democrats, all of them, all of them are going to just see what happens when it comes to the midterms this year. You have put Americans on a back burner, you have put Ukrainians before Americans, you have even left Americans over in the Middle East. You have put um individuals from all over around, around the world that are coming through our border illegally above Americans. You have put them above our homeless, you have put us, put them above our veterans with our own tax dollars. I don't think that, no one did this but you guys, your whole entire party did this to yourselves by thinking that you can use our tax dollars as a piggy bank for your socialist experiment. It failed and now you will pay the price for it come, you know, November 8th.
Reform, we really need to step up both in our efforts on campaign, but also our efforts in governance.
But MSNBC's Joy Reid is in complete denial and thanks the mainstream media, thanks the mainstream media, is just hyping this story.
There is this thing that's happening in the mainstream media that they say, oh, um, Hispanic voters are going Republican. As if they are now a solid Republican group, because you do have some South Texas counties that are shifting red.
Well, I've been pulling my hair out for the last couple of months as I've seen story after story after story that you mentioned, acting as though the Latino vote is somehow firmly a Republican vote now, which couldn't be further from the truth, because when you poll it, Latinos are still firmly Democratic.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start with you, Jesse.
Keep telling yourself that.
We've even reported that there's an increase of Latino voters.
They might not be going Republican, but I, I guarantee you they're shifting over to the independents.
Going toward the Republicans and they act like we're making this stuff up.
Yeah, they do, well, they should be worried. The Democrats made a mistake, cause they tried to lump blacks in with Hispanics and tried to pitch them the same way.
Yep.
But the black experience in America is different than the Hispanic experience, their family trees are different. The Hispanic family tree is complicated. You have light-skinned Hispanics that trace their lineage back to European Spain. You have darker-skinned Hispanics that have more of an indigenous background. Puerto Rico's different than Cuba. Central America's different than South America and then you have second and third generation Hispanics here that are very assimilated and then you have migrants that just got here. And so the Democrats try to pitch Hispanics by using the big government race card play that they use on blacks. And it's not working, because economics, especially inflation and crime, trumps identity politics and it's turned Hispanics into swing voters. Now Hispanics are up for grabs and that would be a death blow to the Democrat Party coalition.
He nailed it on the head and for some reason, like, like black people, Democrats have always taken our votes for granted and that's because honestly, they bought us. Um, in particular, they bought the black woman with that new deal by that racist um Lyndon B. Johnson. And you know, for, for those in my community who still haven't, who, who keeps drinking the fucking Kool-Aid, I'm going to literally ask you, okay? And then I, I, I really want you to reflect upon this, okay? The Confederates, you know, the people who were in charge of slavery back then, you know? The party that pretty much um, uh, I guess erected from that was the Democrat Party, okay? Um, the first free, the slaves when they were free, guess who, what party they belonged to? Not the people who tried to enslave them and keep them in bondage for literally ever, um, they were Republican. Frederick Douglass was a Republican, okay? Now I will ask you, alright, so um, the three-fifth compromise that was done in the Confederates that had to do with slaves, if you were sent up, if a slave escaped and was captured up north, guess what? They were bring your ass back down to the south, okay? That's one thing that Democrats, um, ex-Confederates slash Democrats, you know, loved, um, the hat passed. After slavery was ended, you had Jim Crow law, well, wait, 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 there was the vote thing by literacy. If you were um, by literacy, that was enacted by who? No other than the Democrat Party. Another thing, the KKK, yeah, that came from the Democrat Party. The Jim Crow laws, yeah, that came from the Democrat Party. The Sil, the First Civil Rights Act of 1957, which was filibustered by Strom Thurgood, um, who was a Democrat, who's, who actually held the longest, the longest filibuster ever, okay? Was a Democrat, okay? It was those Republicans that put up the First Civil Rights of 1957 to, in order to have blacks have more rights in society. That was knocked down by no other than who? Democrats. The first um, black Supreme Court justice that was nominated was actually by Republican. You know who shot that down to um, not have them nominated? No other than fucking Joe Biden. So it's like, oh, oh, and the people um who were in charge of the South during Rosa Parks, guess who they were? They were Democrats, like how many times do we, I don't even know how they somehow changed the narrative to say that it was the KKK and all this other stuff that was started by Republicans. No, it's literally in our history books, stop listening to what, you know, the likes of Hillary and Bill and AOC and freaking uh, uh, what's her name, uh, Stacey Abrams tell you. Pick up a book and read it, okay? Go to your half, um, your, your half book, uh, half-priced bookstores, they have really, really, really old books that, you know, that stuff? That can't be erased, that's still there, you can get, if you try to look any, um, look up books for more, that are more modern day when it comes to history and I actually find it fucking disgusting. And in importance, one of them, I don't, I don't subscribe to that anymore, is National Geographic. How the hell did they all of a sudden become political? They've always been about geography and lately, they're, they're just all fucking political. It's really irking my freaking nerves, man. But modern history books are trying to and have at um, been successful in rewriting history in order to paint the Democrats. for, in order to paint the Democrats in a, a very great light. But you cannot look at the, if you, 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 you sit here and complain about the white man and our, our, um, our struggles to have to be independent as blacks. But you fail to even recognize the damage that the Democrats Party, oh, not to mention, I forgot about the whole crime bill, the ninety-four crime bill. How many of these events must we have on display for you guys to wake up and smell the coffee? And to even see that LBJ, the only reason why you vote Democrat is because you don't wanna lose the plantation that it's what we call the welfare system. And the man who put it in place, LBJ, said that she would keep voting Democrat for two hundred years. He literally called us niggers. Yeah, he called us that. But sit here and ca- keep calling me a goon because I don't like those types of white people. I do not like those type of white people who try to tell us that they, we can't be shit without their fucking help. Sorry that I'm getting a little bit heated, but, you know, I, I wish, I just want black people to literally go, because go back, just go back to eighteen, um, go back to around eighteen eighty-something and, and, and map out everything that came from the Confederate into the Democrat Party. And tell me, please tell me that I'm crazy to sit here and think that these people are on our side. When I just literally gave you a list of everything they have done since they, since they erected their party that has wrecked our freaking lives and made our, our, just our lives harder in America. Wasn't the Republicans. And one thing I will say about the Republicans, they never claimed to be, um, there for the people, uh, they never do. They alw- the only thing they were more concerned about was the economy. They felt like, hey, if the economy is gonna doing good, everybody's doing good. And honestly, I'd rather have it like that because at least they won't, they won't be looking at color, okay? It's, it's, it's a dog-eat-dog world. If you can't fucking make it all well, okay, then maybe you don't belong here. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to say you need to commit suicide or anything like that, but it's a dog-eats-dog world. And the, 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 the saddest thing I can, you can ever do to a human being is tell them that you will never be anything, that you can't be anything without our help. That is some egotistical, some, like, I don't know what kind of shit that is, but the damage, psychological damage that does to someone, they will never have the confidence to do anything on your own. But, okay, tell them, you wanna accept it as compassion, I don't fucking see it as compassion. I see it as these people who think they are, are, are superiors and thinking that we can't do shit without their, without their help. But I digress, let me go back to AOC blaming the Democrat Party for losing Latino voters. She's doing the same thing, um, that, um, that Democrats have been doing to the black community forever. Assuming that they got the vote simply why? Because you're La- you're Latino or you're helping them out, okay?
How do they explain Myra Flores, who, you know, is now running for Congress, having won the primary? And by the way, she, uh,
She won that special seat.
She won the special seat, right. But she, the Congressional Hispanic Caucus rejected her as a member. Is it, are you considered Latina if you are a Democrat, but not if you're a Republican?
I mean, they do that to the, the Black Caucus do that to black people. They reject you if you're a Republican or an independent, but they'll gladly accept you if you're a Democrat.
I don't know the answer to the question. I'll say they're light-skinned blacks, I'm one of them, and they're dark-skinned blacks as well, but I understand. I understand the point, I understand the point that,
I don't see color.
I understand the point that you're making and, and I happen to, happen to agree. I think Democrats and Republicans have to realize with every community, you have to have a continuous conversation and engagement with blacks, with whites, with Latinas, with Hispanics, all voters. And when you be- begin to take them for granted and think forty-five days up from an election, you can put a massive get out the vote effort and hopefully that group goes out to vote for you. If that's the only engagement, then you're gonna run into these challenges that I don't often agree with the Congresswoman. I, I think, I, I understand what she's saying. You cannot say they've never campaigned. I think there's a laziness, uh, amongst some Democrats and some democratic strategists about how you go about engaging communities of color, particularly black and Hispanic voters. Um, black and Hispanic voters are interested in crime. We're interested in inflation, we're interested in national security. We want, uh, clean energy, but we also want energy that is plentiful. You have to have the same conversation with those voters you have with every other voter. And when you start trying to subset and figure out how you maybe, uh, angle here to talk to this group of voters, you're gonna run the risk of doing, I think, what the Congresswoman was trying to say, which is alienating people and maybe even pushing them to the other party.
Yeah, don't call him tacos. Jill Biden learned that.
Yeah.
Breakfast tacos.
Dana, the, the truth is that,
Keto works and keto works fast, so that's why we rely on Factor. They send us keto-friendly meals at,
With the number of blacks and Hispanics who are moving toward the Republican Party, I think whatever that number is, there is a movement. And low voter turnout, I think that that might be part of the argument that AOC is making. That, but do you think that there is a motivation on the part of the Democrats to have a high voter turnout?
Well, I, I think that, one, I've never heard her praise anyone. Uh, uh, she's, just complains about everybody. And I would point her to Dan Balls of the Wa- Washington Post, a veteran reporter. He just did a very deep dive on Hispanic voters in Nevada. And that is a Senate seat that they are likely to lose. And most of it will be in Nevada because of Latino voters moving towards them. And I don't know why you guys are laughing, but you can tell me in the commercial break. The other thing is, let's be honest here, that they are departing mostly based on economic issues. So if you push the Green New Deal and you wanna take away their jobs, you wanna change agriculture, you wanna change the way they even refer to themselves and make them call themselves Latinx. Um, they, they, they have abandoned the party on, the, they have abandoned Latinos on, on that. I will point out that if the Stanford Business School shows that Latino communities are the ones that are the most entrepreneurial, who was hurt the most during the COVID lockdowns? Those entrepreneurs. And so they're not going to forget that. You can't just show up and say, well, you can't vote beca- Republican because you never have. That's just not going to work with, with people. And I also think that the school issue is a really big one. When Glenn Youngkin won a lot of Hispanic votes in Virginia, part of the reason was because he said, I will make sure that advanced math is taught in school, that kids are going to be reading at grade level because the parents want their kids to do very well.
All while the Democrats push, oh, math is racist, let's get that out. Oh my god, no. Up in New York, I think it was Bill de Blasio trying to get rid of, um, uh, I guess you could call them, um, oh my god, the harder classes, like the honor classes. Oh no, we need to get rid of that. Everybody needs, let's dumb everybody down on the same level. Let's not give those who have an aptitude to harness it in a harder, in a harder class or in a harder environment, right? No, that, that's too, that's too, that's too racist, okay? We can't do that. Like, seriously? All right, y'all, like, that's, I don't know, I'm like, look, you have, you guys have no one to blame. No one to blame. When you're trying to dumb down people, kids, when you took away their jobs, want them to get on welfare. Hmm, especially if they come from countries like Cuba. Oh, yeah, that would be, that's a really, really terrible thing, um, to implement and then expect them to vote for you come next term. Hmm, yeah, it's not gonna happen. They've seen this already in their country and they know how that turns out. So the bullshit story that you're feeding them with this whole new Green Deal, yeah, yeah, it's not going to work.
All right, Greg, you know, part of, part of what AOC is complaining about is when, when she, when the president issued that, uh, pardon for those people who were in prison for marijuana possession. She wanted it to extend to undocumented individuals. And she's very upset with Joe Biden for that. In the end, how does it play out?
I don't know, Judge, but I, as you know, I identify as Latinx. At least on certain, on certain adult websites I do anyway. I don't, I'm, I'm wondering what she has done for Latinos. She's killed thousands of jobs. That would have directly benefited Latinos in her district. She said nothing about crime. I haven't heard anything, especially crime affecting women. She does, she, she actually said, uh, uh, to your point.
Well, she doesn't know what a woman is, so how could she possibly send, stand there and try to defend violence against, against women? Like, she literally backed herself into this corner. Let's just be honest.
In that, sh- all she does is say, you, 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 and you go, well, what about you? And she has nothing. I think what she's saying, and I'm reading her mind here, which is hard to do, but, uh, maybe what she's saying is she wants Latinos to be turned into a, a homogenized voting bloc
Yeah.
that Dems can count on no matter what.
Yeah.
I think that's all it is.
That's what it is.
And, and she's trying to figure out why Latinos are resistant to being part of the victim class. Like, why, like, they, the left has spent decades, decades, trying to get blacks to be seen as, 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 as an oppressed group so they don't ever leave. And I think that she's watching the Exodus, she's watching people leave and she's saying, you know what? We don't have a strong grip on Latinos. How do we get them to think that we're their savior? They won't because their savior is religion, family, working. It's not the kind of, it's not progressive politics. And I think she might be perceptive enough to realize the progressive woke ideology is, doesn't work. And it's not working on blacks either. If you talk to blacks, they don't, they're like, you're like, this stuff, this is just for white liberals. This is for guilty white liberals.
Exactly, uh, and I, am I, okay, let me just finish, let him finish.
Hey, Sean Hannity here, hey, click here.
So, yeah, I one hundred percent agree. All these policies that they wanna pass out of, out of compassion, they're not compassionate. This is all white guilt from liberals. And there is a very distinct group of those individuals too. Not everybody on the left agrees, um, not everybody on the left who is white are like that. But there is a very subset of these individuals that have the loudest voice, they're in all, all, they're in the height, they are in positions of power that think that their compassion is helping us. And we already know that it's not. But for some reason, all they gotta do is pander to a few blacks and they'll just eat that shit up. Because why? They're just that dumb, they're that brainwashed, their kids are brainwashed and their kids are probably gonna do the same thing, vote for the white person who says they're gonna give you this, give you that, give you this and give you that, uh, just like they're on a plantation, like, ugh. Like, honestly, those types of blacks, they're, they just disgust me. I'm not gonna even lie. I'm like, hmm, you couldn't be my posse, bye. But anyways, thanks for tuning in.